My name is July, United States of America. To the people of which it stands, one nation, God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Roll call please, Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Brooks?
I'm here on the end.
We aren't going to let it go, are we? Mr. Marconi?
I'm here.
Mrs. McBride is excused. Mr. Barrett?
Here also.
Mr. Belishko?
Here.
Also in attendance is Administrator Charles McCormick, Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, and Administrative Assistant Lisa Sanfilo. Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker of the dais who has the floor. Chairperson shall preserve order and decorum, prevent attacks on personalities. Chairperson shall determine all points of order. No persons except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into a microphone.
Would anybody like to speak on pending legislation?
Thank you. Linda Joseph, Wilkes-Barre. I am sure that none of you are going to be surprised that I'm up here to talk about the fireworks ordinance and my 100% support that we do this. Back in 2020, Chief Coffey, Chief Delaney, and Mayor Brown came to our Rowing Mill Hill Residents Association meeting to talk about the Act 43 that had been passed to allow the consumer-grade fireworks to be used in the city and set off. And they asked us that we start a grassroots campaign to send to our Harrisburg legislators to repeal the act, is what we actually wanted. So after that, which was in July of 2020, so this was right during the pandemic, we went and we, Councilman Brooks, our organization, and Crime Watch got together and we developed a petition that asked for the repeal of Act 43. We went door-to-door with the petition. We got over 750 signatures in about two months, which was also online. So people signed online and not just from Wilkes-Barre, it was around the valley and even around the state. People had seen it and wanted it, that we could not have those. So even Mayor Brown did a letter online and people could print that off and send that in also. So in September of 2020, Councilman Brooks and I personally delivered them to our state reps and our state senators with all the copies of the petitions. Nothing happened. So I understand, I guess in 2021 there might have been a little bit movement where they let you increase the fines. But last year, I guess there was a change where they gave municipalities more authority on how to handle it within their cities. And I guess that's what this amendment is to update, to agree with that. So that's why we're 100%. I know the residents really, really, there's issues, there's danger, there's been a fire that Chief Delaney talked about on Tuesday, that people lost their home. The debris, we have pictures of the debris that's left. 150 feet, there is nowhere in the city whether you can ever find something that you can actually do that safely. So this ordinance, as I understand it, is a prohibits any of it. It bans any of it, whether it's a home, a street, a park. And I think this is the right direction, that we definitely need this. I know that there are enforcement, things that have to be done obviously, and I hope that we do work on that more. And I encourage all municipalities to follow Wilkes-Barre's lead and get on board with it because it's something that really ruins the quality of life of the residents, of, like has been mentioned before, of people with PTSD, the veterans, the pets. It's really not, it's not a good thing to have in an area that is so densely populated. So I really hope that you will vote to at least this first reading to pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else on pending legislation? Tony?
Yes, I'd like to also echo Linda's sentiments about passing this legislation. It's a long time coming that we update our language on here to make the fines stronger and to clearly prohibit, as Chief Delaney mentioned the other night, there's far and few, if not many, places in the city where you could legally set off fireworks. And I just want to read something here from State Senator Gene Yaw, who is one of the sponsors of the bill. And perhaps this might explain, Linda, why no action came in Harrisburg. He was asked about repealing the law. And Gene Yaw said, "We're not going to repeal it, get over it." He stated that municipalities want to pass the buck, it's simple as that. All I'm saying is that they don't want to enforce the law, they want someone else to do it. I hear it every year. Well, Harrisburg opened up a big can of worms on municipalities. You know, I'm sure the stats that come out every year on the Fourth of July, there's too many calls to even respond to. I don't know how many police officers you would actually need to respond to all those calls coming in on the Fourth of July in that time period. So it's not just a matter of municipalities not wanting to enforce the law. The can of worms that Harrisburg opened makes it impossible for us to properly enforce things with the way the law is written. And this, I believe, will close a lot of those loopholes that the state government has kicked down to us. It's been getting worse year after year. You know, I recall the one year, I don't remember if it was 2021 or 2020, but I had left my parents' house on North Penn Ave probably around maybe 10 o'clock that night on July 3rd or 4th. And as I'm coming around Penn Ave behind the brewery, there were multiple people launching fireworks off in the street, literally in the middle of the street. The smoke was so thick from fireworks being launched in that area of the city alone, you would have thought that this was, you know, a war zone. You know, things going off in the air, smoke billowing. The next day, as I was driving by, there must have been thousands of firecrackers alone littering the streets. So it's not just a safety issue, you know, it's a littering issue as well. Thankfully, over in Brookside, it got quiet about midnight. But over on Penn Ave, my parents said, "2:00 in the morning, people still launching off fireworks." And for anybody out there, you know, every time this comes up, I always see a couple people online commenting things like, "The city just wants to take people's fun away," and things like that. But the ordinance clearly carves out exceptions to small things like sparklers, novelties, those little snappers that you throw. We're not, that's, those aren't the issue. It's these airborne projectiles that can cause fires like the one that happened a few years ago that displaced eight people. It's litter in our streets that, you know, clog up the storm drains. It's the sound of fireworks going off into ungodly hours of the night disrupting working people, disrupting veterans and other folks with PTSD. You know, this isn't about the city trying to clamp down on anybody's fun. It's about bringing responsibility and safety back to the city. And, you know, I urge the passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Anyone else on pending legislation? No? Kathy?
Okay, so we'll have a motion in a second on the consent agenda, which will be the resolutions in the minutes. Need a motion? Motion, Mr. Brooks?
Second.
Presented by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
And then we have one ordinance, which is file of council number three, which is the consumer firework ordinance. We need a motion in a second.
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Belishko.
Second.
Presented by Mr. Marconi. Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
Council presentations, anything today?
Nothing since Tuesday, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Marconi, anything?
Nothing since Tuesday either.
Mr. Barrett?
Just a reminder about Monday's Memorial Day parade. Monday at 10 o'clock starts from Scott Street in Parsons and hopefully we'll have a nice turnout. Thank you, sir.
That's all?
That's it.
Okay. Robert Immler?
Hi, my name is Bob Immler. I live at 236 South Sherwin Street. I was to the meeting this morning and after the meeting I had some issues about one-way streets and parking. And they told me that a lot of the issues, which I was here two weeks ago, you told me to go to them, now they're telling me to come here back to you. The issues were my driveways. I have driveways that I've called specifically and when I call up, there's, the officers come out and they don't tow anything. And they told me at the meeting today, they're supposed to tow things that are in your driveway, anything in your driveway. I showed them pictures today of cars and officers would come out and they, "No, we're not going to tow that." And they told me today that, "No, they're supposed to tow them." That's one issue. Is that your, am I in the right place? They sent me back here.
Were you finished?
Finished? For that one, there's another one too.
Go ahead, continue.
All right. And the second one was about the streets from Metcalf into Joseph Lane, the way they're parking, they're parking and it's a two-way street. And I'm trying to get it to the point where it's a one-way street down because it causes a problem there. Vehicles have to actually back all the way up down the street or all the way up and down. And they're saying that it's not necessarily, I would have to come here with a petition for, with names on it in order to do that. See, you sent me to them and they're sending me more or less back here. That's what I got today. I don't know which way to go.
I don't know why they sent me back here.
They sent me back here.
Charlie, you're aware of it?
Yeah.
I'll follow up with the administration part of it, which is the policing and the parking enforcement. And they've been up there, they investigated the site, they're checking it for whether or not that'd be suitable for a one-way. But again, the one-way is the province of the traffic committee. The process is you'd have to go because you may want one-way and half of your neighbors don't want one-way. So the process is you need to have a petition filed, but that comes before the traffic committee, it doesn't come before council. If traffic committee makes a recommendation to modify the area to one-way, then it becomes an ordinance issue for the council. So, and my understanding, and I met you in the hallway and then I checked how you did today, my understanding was all of your questions, they were directing you, but they weren't directing you back to council. They said that they would analyze what's going on, they'd get PE involved, they'd get the police involved, and they advise you about the petition that you're going to need in order to come to traffic.
I do have everything still in my car. He did say, "When you get your people's names, bring it to you." So I don't bring it to you, I bring it...
Bring it to the traffic committee.
Okay.
Okay, and then all council is involved, the administration's involved in the enforcement, so I'm on that, which is what I could do. And council's job at some point is if the traffic committee makes a recommendation for one-way, then it would come to council.
We're on our agenda.
It's an ordinance change, okay?
I got you. Who is my lady there? Miss McBride, is she still my councilwoman?
Yeah.
She is?
She's not here today.
I know, she wasn't here last time. Okay, okay, thank you.
But you can contact her if you...
I can't, she never answers, I don't know. There's no answer. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Gregory Ropp?
Hello, my name is Greg Ropp. I live at 75 Gardner Ave in Parsons. And I guess you all know about the fire at Magnus Pizza, we had the problem with the fire hydrants. Well, I was sitting back there, Mr. Marconi came and told me that during the work session, that Chief Delaney did a little talk on how the water company's involved now. And I don't know all the Pacifics, but my neighbors were just asking for me to come here just to put a little, not fuel on the fire, but just to keep it in your head that we're still very concerned about it. And if there is any protocol or any paperwork, can it be put in the paper stating the water company's involved? How many times a year they would check the fire hydrants? And if there is a problem, to let us know. I mean, it was a major thing up there, running around trying to get water. I mean, the guys did a great job saving the house to the left, but of course Magnus burned very bad. So I'm just doing what my neighbors asked. I just want people to know that we're still very much concerned about the fire hydrants. Now, the one neighbor did say that the fire company was there, that's why I wish Chief Delaney was here, that they did check the one on the corner of Mill and Gardner. The neighbor wasn't sure what they were doing, but they were checking it. So that's why I'm questioning, who does the checking, the fire department or the water company? But if we get something in the paper that tells us, "Okay, you're going to get it once a year," I mean, it puts something inside your head that you can keep an eye out there when it's coming close again, see if it's done, just to make us feel better when we're sleeping in bed and know they were checked.
I did bring that up with Chief Delaney, and he did say just what you're saying and...
Well, that's most of what I said, is what you had us to read.
I'm sure he has that, he's on top of that with the water company.
Oh, I understand he is, but I still would like, if you can, just a little blurb in the paper that, you know, it's checked once or twice a year and it's the water company. So we're not looking for fire trucks coming to open them up, it's the water company.
Greg, thanks for coming down and expressing your concerns. I do know within, I think, two days, two days after that fire, it might even have been the next day, there's two brand-new hydrants there.
I was 100%, yeah, I mean, that was perfect.
Yes, and then like, like I understood. Like I had, I mentioned to you before, Chief Delaney was here on Tuesday and it just came up in conversation. It wasn't on any agendas or anything, but he gave a very, very clear, concise statement. And just, I know I mentioned it to you, but just for the record too, our work sessions now, they're also recorded. So, you know, you can go on YouTube and just listen to what he has to say. I think it'll...
That's why I'm going back, because there's a lot of people, they don't have computers to go and look at that. And just a tiny blurb, just to put people at ease that something's being done.
Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Angel Mathis?
Angel Mathis, Wilkes-Barre. I have three things that I want to bring up. The first is DPW. Every other week when it's time to pick up bottles and cans on my block, they, I don't know how, I put the can, I put the city bin with my address on it in the middle of my driveway. And somehow is, I understand that there's private collection on both sides of me. Not both sides of me, but there's one owner that owns a lot of the block. However, every other week I have to call DPW because they'll pick up my trash, but they won't take my recycling. Where they have to come back a second time to actually pick up my recycling because I have to call them to say, "Hey, you missed my recycling." And this is every other week. The second thing I have is Istanbul Grill. When they came to ask to put tables outside of the restaurant, I understand they expanded. But the problem with the tables that they put out there, they're slowly migrating further and further beyond the fence. Where now they put these little perfect flower pots, where those are beyond the fence. Where, you know, when someone is walking down the street, coming to the square or going back, you could barely get three people through with the benches and everything else and the streetlights. So is it a way they can rein those tables in? Because I, you know, I complained when Franklin's put out that gate, but you know what? It keeps their tables in, where it doesn't migrate outside onto the sidewalk. Because from what my understanding was, they wouldn't be all those tables out on the sidewalk the way they are. Where it seems like every time I go there, they expand it into the business that was next to them. So they have a lot of seating inside. They have a whole lot of empty seating outside because every time I go down there, they're empty. And it's taken up sidewalk where right now it may not be a problem. But we had the Fin Arts Fiesta down there and it did present a problem and all of the tables, most of the tables were empty. And they're migrate, they're just slowly migrating further and further but past their little fence that they have there. Because if you go there today, you'll see that they had, that they're starting to move, their flower pots that they put out are starting to move more into the sidewalk. And then the third thing that I had is like this weekend, was it this weekend, Fin Arts Fiesta? This past weekend was Fin Arts Fiesta. Is there a way the city could actually get a calendar? Because, a community calendar. Only because I say this, because it's like the NAMI Walk was the same, was the Saturday. And, you know, everyone typically gather at the guard parking lot, but it was set up for Fin Arts Fiesta. So when you have people like me that has ambulatory issues, when we were pushed over to the Sterling Lot, you know, it's hard when you can't walk on, when you have difficulty walking on uneven ground. So that's why I bring that to your attention. And that's it.
Charlie, can we get somebody down there?
I'll check, I'll check Istanbul tomorrow.
Okay. DPW, remind them to come?
Remind DPW. And lastly, that wasn't the Fin Arts Fiesta.
That wasn't?
No, it wasn't. That was a separate situation. As a matter of fact, I was sort of surprised, I thought I would have known that. I came by and I said, "Oh, what's that?" Yeah, that's, they had a permit and everything kept in there, but that's not in any...
Okay, because that's what was explained to us.
Yeah.
That they were part of the, yeah, that they were part of the Fiesta.
No, they weren't.
And we were like, every year we gather there for the walk.
Yeah, no, they are not. So they did get a permit, they took the permit out for that function. But I guess because the Fiesta draws so many people, people are starting to do offshoots, you know, have something like the music on the square, music in the South Main Plaza was done. Probably to spin off of all the people coming on the Fiesta. So you're probably going to see more of that. To some extent, that's awful, but probably your group should probably maybe think about either another weekend or something like that. Because that looks like that's going to probably be an annual one.
No, the new one is the annual one.
Yeah, that's not on city property, that's on private owners.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, motion adjourned. Motion. Motion.